Call this public session to order. We have a quorum. This meeting is being webcast live and recorded. The recording or webcast may capture images and sounds of those attending the meeting. This meeting is being webcast live and recorded. The recording or webcast may capture images and sounds of those attending the meeting. I'm going to identify closed session items, recommended expulsions, recommended suspended expulsions, recommended reinstatements, public assignment, reassignment, appointment, public employee discipline, dismissal, release complaints, conference with labor negotiators, conference for real property negotiators, conference with legal counsel, existing lit, anticipated litigation, public employee performance evaluation. Is, okay, where did I leave off here? Oh yeah, sorry about that. Okay, is there any public comment on any closed session item? Okay, we're going to adjourn to closed session. Welcome our new student board representative, Mr. Tawanda Charamuca from El Diamante. Adam Avalos will serve as the Spanish interpreter for this meeting. Meeting attendees who would like to listen to the Spanish interpretation of the meeting, please pick up your head from some table located in the back of the meeting room. This announcement will not be shared in Spanish. Thank you, Adam. This meeting is being webcast live and recorded. The recording of the webcast may capture images and sounds of those attending the meeting. Members of the public wanting to provide public comment on items listed on tonight's agenda, we recommend you fill out the public comment form located on the table in the back of this room. Please hand the completed form to Delia Smart, board manager, before the item comes up on the agenda. We recommend you complete a separate form for each agenda item you'd like to comment on. Mrs. Smart is sitting at the counter located on the west side. Where are you? Oh, west side of the room. Members of the public providing public comment, please use the microphone on the stand located will be in the front of the room. Now we'll have our pledge of allegiance, board member, Mr. Paul Belt.
Will please stand with me as we recite our pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to now report action taken in closed session. In closed session on a motion by board member Casebeers Saleno, second by board member Odo, the board agreed unanimously to appoint Karen Ari to the position of principal on special assignment and learning. Is Mrs. Arwin here? Dr. Karen Ari has served as the principal of Global Learning Charter School for the last six years. She's also served as principal of Royal Oaks Elementary for two years. Prior to employment with the district, Dr. Ari worked for Lindsay Unified School District, where she served as learning director for a year and director of research and evaluation for seven years. Dr. Ari has also taught for the IMPACT program at Tulare County Office of Ed for the last 10 years. She also served as adjunct instructor at Bradman University, Chapman University, and the University of Southern Mississippi. Over the years, Dr. Ari has served as Visalia Unified and Kings Canyon Unified as a consultant assisting with grant writing and data reporting. Prior to these roles, Dr. Ari served as a teacher for Burbank Unified School District, ENCA School in Istanbul, did I say that right? Tabuk International School in Tabuk, Saudi, wow, you're amazing. Saudi Arabia, Pixley Elementary School District, and Clemmie Gill School of Science and Conservation. Dr. Ari earned a Bachelor of Arts in Social Warfare and Scandinavian Studies from the University of California, Berkeley, and a Doctorate in Education from University of California, Los Angeles. She holds a multiple subjects teaching credential and administrative service credential. On behalf of the Board of Trustees, congratulations to Dr. Karen Ari. In closed session on a motion from board member Gabi, a second from board member Naylor, the board agreed unanimously to appoint Jessica Nguyen to the position of principal of Global Learning Charter School. Ms. Jessica Nguyen has served as assistant principal of Global Learning Charter for the last three years. She began her career in, with VUSD as an elementary school teacher, serving at Highland and Hurley Elementary School for nine years. Prior to her employment with the district, she worked as an elementary school teacher for three years at Early Mart Elementary School. Ms. Nguyen earned a Bachelor of Arts in Liberal Studies and a Master of Arts in Education Leadership and Administration from California State University Fresno. She holds a multiple teachings credential and administrative service credential. On behalf of the Board of Trustees, congratulations to Ms. Jessica Nguyen. In closed session on a motion by board member Dr. Odo and second by trustee Naylor, the board agreed unanimously to appoint Michael Yates to the position of principal of Linwood Elementary. Mr. Michael Yates has served as principal for Ridgeview Middle School for the last seven years. He has been employed with Visalia Unified School District for a total of 17 years, where he served as a high school social studies teacher and a high school assistant principal. Prior to his employment with the district, Mr. Yates taught at Lindsay Unified School District for seven years. Mr. Yates earned a Bachelor of Arts in History from Pepperdine University and a Master's Degree in Education Administration from California State University Fresno. He holds a single subject teaching credential in social science and an administrative service credential. On behalf of the Board of Trustees, congratulations to Mr. Michael Yates.
Just want to congratulate our new appointees. Also want to make a point of, you know, part of the way our board and our process works is announcements don't go out until, of course, the board has official approval. And so I recognize tonight, coincidentally, that Ridgeview Middle School is here to perform. And so I know this is a little bit of, oh my goodness, but I do want you to know that we're excited for Mr. Yates. I know we're excited about Linwood. He's excited about the future of Ridgeview as well. And we do have communication rolling out tonight, but I did just want our families here to know why they're hearing it before they were notified via other channels. So just wanted you to understand that. So thank you very much and congratulations to these three individuals.
The board took the following action in closed session on a motion by board member Gabi and a second by board member Viegas. The board unanimously, unanimously to approve the settlement agreement between the district and parties representing OHH case number 20230304600. All right, let's move on. We have revisions to the agenda. The following revisions are closed, agenda items 4.1, 4.2, 4.3, 6.5, 6.6, 6.7, 6.8, 6.9, and 6.25. Do I have a motion for the revision of the agenda?
Second.
I'll motion. On a motion by trustee Casebeers Saleno and a second by trustee Naylor, all in favor? Student board representative votes yes and motion passes unanimously. And now by coincidence, I think we have a performance by Ridgeview Middle School Advanced Band, Mr. Thompson.
Yes, Mr. Bishop, you want to bring the whole band in and we'll get going here in just a moment after they get seated?
Yeah.
Oh yeah. We'll let them get settled and I'll do introductions in just a moment. Well, good evening, everyone. This is kind of, this is something we've been doing all year. It's been a highlight of our students' BOPA programs and things that we have going on in our district and just excited tonight to have this group in front of us here. This group is Ridgeview Middle Schools Jazz Band under the direction of Sarah Basaleti. I hope I said that correctly. Yay. Tonight they're going to perform for us Take the A Train and the Southern Exposure for our school board performance tonight. So let's give a big round of applause for our Ridgeview Jazz Band. Thank you, Ridgeview Jazz Band. If you guys want to head on out, we'll get you guys taken care of. Thank you so much. Well done. Parents are welcome to follow them out if you would like. And it'll take just a moment for us to kind of reset. So give us just a couple of minutes to reset.
Thank you, Ridgeview Middle School. That was amazing. Almost made me want to dance. We're going to move on with our agenda. 4.1 Spotlight on Good Things Happening in the District. Superintendent Schrum.
Well, even though I get to do the spotlight report, that it always follows our student performance is challenging because it's hard to do better than that. And that is why we're here. So want to echo those comments from our board. Thank you so much, Ridgeview Middle School, for an excellent performance. I mean, they sounded like professionals. So kudos to their teacher, parents, support. It takes a lot of people for students to be able to participate in activities like that. And so as we always like to start our board meetings, grounding us on our purpose and why we're here, and that's our students. So thank you for that. Always look forward to that. So in the spotlight tonight, a couple, several things that we want to highlight, of course, we had spring break and some other things. And so we took a week off and now we're back to highlighting the great things that are occurring in Visalia Unified Schools. And so of course guided by our beliefs and commitments, our agenda tonight, again, the spotlight on the district. Want to begin with a couple of off script moments. And the first is I want to make a recognition. So would board manager Delia Smart, please stand? She loves this. Now, we are recognizing Delia, and you don't have to stand long. You sit right back down if you want to, because I know that. When I first got here, I was getting ready for board meetings, I had some people talk to me about these packets that were done to get ready for board meetings and how much resource and time that took from our print shop. And I was like, I don't know, you know, okay, I'll look at it. Then I get the packet and then multiply that by the number of packets that were made. And people rightly so questioned, well, is there a better way to do this? Is there a better use of resources? And so we began to look into what are other highly effective districts using as far as their board management? And I can tell you, it's not Google Docs. And so Delia took the lead on project to convert us to Diligent Community, which is a recognized across the country in government entities from councils to state to other school systems as the management system for these public documents. And we also wanted to make sure it was more accessible and easy to find and all those things for our public and also, you know, these things stay and we want to keep them recorded. And so this has been, I don't know if it's been a labor of love, but it's been a lot of work. And because of her work, this is our first meeting where we are now fully moved from our previous platform to Diligent Community. So I want to give a huge shout out to Delia and all the work. There has been countless hours spent in moving us from a system that we have been using. Many folks in this room know what that's like, for a long, long time to something different, right? And it takes a lot of work. So thank you so much. Also want to highlight tonight, and we have, we have several of our Visalia Police Department folks here, Mike Verissimo and some others, and they're waving back there. And I want to spotlight them tonight too, because this weekend we had a series of unfortunate events occur. And from the moment the first threatening post was on, I don't, the platform, social media, immediately it was reported and they spring into action. And we have, again, several of our youth service officers and others that are here and our chief. And I have been in a lot of, well, not a lot, this is my third system. I don't guess that's a lot, but, or fourth. But anyway, rare is it, rare do you find a communication between entities as strong as we have here in Visalia? We could not do this work without our community partners. And while these things are unfortunate and we want to do everything we can to stop them, it is the reality we live in and they're going to happen. They're going to continue to happen, unfortunately. But what we're going to do every time is what you saw this weekend. This group spent countless hours working with our district team to investigate, to interview, to do site visits to homes of students that we are, adults that we needed to look into, took action. As a district, our goal and commitment is that we communicate as much as we can, as fast as we can. And that's exactly what happened in this case. And so it resulted in the original poster being arrested and charged, as well as facing school discipline consequences. And then the copycat post that surfaced that next day and into the morning also resulted in, in just a few hours, because of the work of these gentlemen, ladies, and others, another arrest. And while it's never, you know, I don't ever want to celebrate an arrest. That's, that's not why I'm saying this tonight. I am saying this tonight because those actions are wrong. We need parents to check your kids' social media. Don't let something that you post result in something that's going to follow you for the rest of your life. And we recognize adolescents, I know all about brain development and science. Yes, it's still development. It's all there. That's no excuse in this day and age. And it takes parents talking to their kids. It really takes our peers, our kids, talking to each other. And so you're going to hear Assistant Superintendent DeMayo tonight talk about, we, we really want to engage our kids because, I mean, I'm of a certain age, I can talk all day long and 13, 14, 15 year olds may or may not listen to me, right? But they will listen to their friends. And so if we create a culture where these things are not acceptable and peers hold each other accountable, we can make some difference. So a huge shout out to our team back there. Thank you so much for being here tonight. We cannot do this without you. And I want Visalia to be proud of this partnership and proud of our police department, because again, I will tell you, this level of support and coordination doesn't happen everywhere. And we should be very proud and take some reassurance that that is the, what we have here in Visalia. So thank you. So moving on to our sites tonight, first of all, our first spotlight, Riverway. Now, wanted to spotlight this tonight because Riverway was experiencing a little bit of a problem, some graffiti, right? We've never heard of that happening in bathrooms, right? Rare occurrence. So a couple of ways, obviously we have to figure out who's doing it, you know, discipline, all of those things. But how do we prevent this behavior from happening? And so the principal and the school team partnered with a local graffiti artist, our ELOP program, our student discipline team, Frank and some others, and began to get a group together of students that maybe had some involvement in this, but then others that were just artistic and interested. And now I'm not exactly sure how many kids are in the club, but it's now an active thriving club, quite a few members. And if I'm not mistaken, I believe that since this began, there have not been any repeats of the incident that originated. And so what a great example of connectivity. Congratulations to the principal, the teachers and the staff. Micah Sinage, and she's here tonight as well. So congratulations. Thank you for that connectivity. Okay, now, I usually don't have clapping, so like I'm getting excited. This is, okay, this is good stuff though. I like it. All right, spotlight two, see, I almost forgot to advance my slide. Crowley Students had the opportunity to meet local professionals in Visalia to learn about professionals and steps to get there, whether it's going to college or career readiness pathways. Many guest speakers, including our own board member, Dr. Randy Viegas, Kawaya Equipment, many, many others, Visalia Fire Department, police as well. And so thank you for that exposure. Annie R. Mitchell, really great. You see here the kids. Now what's exciting about this is I'm a strong believer, and if you want to build your programs, you start in the elementary school, right? And so Mount Whitney High School, Divisadero Middle School visited students from Annie R. Mitchell during lunch to share their amazing singing talent. And so it's great to see our schools come together to spread their love for music and singing. And now we probably have some kids at Annie R. Mitchell who are like, you know what? I want to be in the choir and I want to do those things as well. So congratulations to you. Linwood Elementary School, huge shout out. Odyssey of the Mind, state championships. They placed fourth, first, with their fifth and sixth graders respectively, winning against middle school teams. This team will now be traveling to Michigan to compete in the world finals competition at the end of May. So shout out to Linwood principal and your team as well. Also want to give a shout out to Science Olympiad, and we will have this in our next spotlight. We missed it for this one, but we had two teams that, that competed in that at a state and higher level, and that's Green Acres Middle School and Ridgeview Middle School. So congratulations to those students. We've made a commitment as a board. Another thing I heard when I moved to Visalia is that we need to do more to engage our advanced learners, gifted and talented, those sorts of things. And so last week, our board invested in a promotional opportunity for an individual to begin to build what that could look like at our elementary schools, because we should have a Science Olympiad club and program, Odyssey of the Mind, at every single elementary school. And so we're committed now with ELOP. now with ELOP and other resources to start to rebuild some of those pathways so that we can connect our advanced learners all the way through, starting in elementary school all the way up. So I'm excited about the future there. Adult Education Celebration Week, we had 15 students celebrated, 40 boost community businesses and organizations at our adult school. Congratulations there. Also, one of my favorite things is educator of the week. As those, as our board knows, almost every spotlight now, because of our teachers and our principals and our site leaders, we have teachers that have been recognized by KSE24 and named their educator of the week. They get a visit, they're on TV, and oftentimes nominations driven through students and other entities as well. So in back to back weeks, two VUSD educators were named teachers of the week by KSE24, Mr. Marsh, third grade teacher at Conyer Elementary, and Mr. Nahara, third grade teacher at Viva Blunt Elementary. I'm not sure if they were able to be with us tonight, but congratulations to them. And, and I'm fine if every week it's Visalia and people begin to wonder, well, is there, are there any other school districts out there? No, we're the best. All right. So spotlight on student success, first responders. Colleges Sequoia held its annual exposition for first, our First Responders Academy placed first. Congratulations. They competed against Lindsay, Armorville, and some other teams. This is the first time they competed and they came in first. So thank you also to our explorers, unit advisors and others for helping to train our students. And I know our local law enforcement and emergency services are actively involved in supporting this program. Goshen Elementary School, congratulations to Melissa Hernandez-Vargas, fourth grader from Goshen, placed second in California for National History Day. More than 1,400 students participated from 244 schools across 24 counties. Great work. Had an opportunity to attend this last night. About 40-ish students, I believe, were recognized, completed a project for civic engagement and received recognition at a ceremony. And these students will receive the Civic Seal of Engagement. It will be added to their transcript as well as receiving a graduation stall. So the future of our community is in great hands with the civic mindedness and had an opportunity to listen to a couple of these students' projects. It's really impactful and our students are going to make a difference in the world as they move from high school into that world. So congratulations also to our high school teachers and principals. Several were there last night that have supported opportunities like this for our students. Thank you for that. Continuing our spotlight on scholarship, I believe it was about a week or so ago, we had over 200 high school seniors recognized by Colleges Sequoia and the California Scholarship Federation for reaching lifetime status through the California Scholarship Foundation. Of course, they have to meet certain academic expectations, applications, going to class, grades, all of those things. There's a point system involved, only A's and B's count. So these really are the best of the best, right? Students, it really rose and have received this recognition. And if I'm not mistaken, I think almost every single high school had increased their numbers from the previous years. And so that shows that there are teacher sponsors at each one of these schools actively working. I understand you really have to kind of start engaging kids when they come in as freshmen and then really follow through with them. And many of these students, when they spoke, they gave a shout out to whether it was their principal, their counselor, or the advisor that had kind of helped them on this path. So congratulations to these students. It was an amazing luncheon to attend. Also, another thing that we've, oh, thank you. Another thing that we have been working on are our partnerships with local colleges. You know, when we talked about the percentage of our kids that were going to college in Visalia Unified or going on to a four-year institution, it's very low. And we know many kids are capable, but how do we build bridges to connect them to that? And one of those is our partnership with UCM Merced, our automatic admissions program. There were over 458 students who were identified as being math eligible. Now, that doesn't mean they're all going to go there, right? But that means there are 458 kids in Visalia Unified today that know they have guaranteed admission to a UC. That's phenomenal. Congratulations to those students and our counseling team. Spotlight on sports, had an opportunity to visit both of our elementary sites. We had elementary track teams compete in the track championships, Mineral King and Community Stadium. Congratulations to all of those schools and then the top six there. And then that continues with our other side. And there may or may not be competition between those schools, I understand, but all kids are winners. And so thank you, teachers, that a lot of work goes into putting together events like that. And so it's a great opportunity for our kids. So thank you for your leadership. Visual and Performing Arts, both Redwood High School Winter Percussion and Color Guards won top honors at the Sierra Cup Classic at Save Mart Center at CSU Fresno. Congratulations to them. LD Amonte High School Advanced Orchestra unanimous superiors. Golden West High School Guard and Percussion Gold Medal Champions at the SVWAA Championships. And it continues. Redwood High School Stagecraft Sea Train, you see a very happy teacher and kids there. Accomplishments, Baylen Franks from Valley Oak Middle School won the middle school snare drum solo and ensemble, and Anthony Serrato won the high school tenor solo and ensemble competition. And then moving on, continuing Visual and Performing Arts, both Concert Choir and Chamber Choir received superior ratings at the Central Coast ACDA Festival. So congratulations to those students. Great performance last week, Golden West and their musical of The Lightning Thief. I think many of us had the opportunity to attend that and just a wonderful experience. And again, we have kids that, I mean, these guys could already be on Broadway, as we've seen in every one of our high schools. And then moving to our expanded learning opportunity, several field trips have occurred over the weekend, medical exploration field trip to, for Washington Elementary School, medical exploration, LD Amonte Theater took a field trip to Big Cat Haven. I've not been there yet. I'll have to go visit. Golden West High School took a Saturday field trip to Kingsburg Honey. And so the whole point of Extended Learning Opportunity Program is exposing our students to things beyond what they may have experienced. We have students that may not have ever been outside of Visalia. And so when we think about how do we connect them so that they see relevance in school, it's through things like this, and that they know that there are opportunities out there, even if it's not something that their family may know. And so huge shout out to Andy DeMayo and that whole team. This is brand new, our first year of ELOP, and already they are being recognized across the state as a, as a program to come and see what they're doing. We had a visit from the California Department of Education, multilingual support team to visit our dual immersion programs, of course, at our Mountain Vista immersion program. And then, of course, as everyone knows, we're very excited about expanding that into a second site this upcoming school year at Willow Glen. We had a US Congressman visit. Jim Costa was here and visited Golden Oak. Thank you. They had about, oh, I don't know, 30 minutes notice, hey, Congressman's coming to your school. That's how that rolls, right? And, but they did a great job. And what was really cool about that, I will say, is we, you know, he, he had an opportunity to go into, I think it was a couple of classrooms, and he actually took over teaching for a little while and really made a connection to the teachers and took time to just say how much he valued what the teachers did. And I mean, I did not expect that. And I see the principal, I don't think either one of us did. I mean, it really, really was cool. And he talked about the importance of setting a strong foundation with the kids. And so it was, then he played a little basketball. So it was, it was just a great visit. And then we've had some visits, had an opportunity to bring some of our partners from Paper to LD Amonte. Of course, Paper is our online tutoring platform, our board invested in. This is free 24/7 chat-based tutoring for every fourth through 12th grader. We know we have more work to do in getting communication out, how this can be utilized both in and outside of the classroom, but really excited about where that's going to go and how that's going to continue to benefit our students. Lots of social media spotlights. I'm trying to go fast, but there's a lot. Highlights of our Doc Band Event, National Autism Awareness Month, facilities highlight, interesting picture, but you know, it's important to enhance bathrooms as well as classrooms, just, but great things happening there, right? And then National Library Month, amazing shout out to Val and that team. Our libraries in our schools are now hubs. I've gone to so many campuses where that's the place to be at recess and other things. And that's just a testament to, to all of our folks who helped staff those facilities and make them come alive. And so love that. Thank you so much for that great work. Of course, part of engaging with our community is really working with our police department. And again, our chief here, we did a PSA. We were both very excited about being on film, but I think it turned out really well. And I think it sends a strong message to our community. And, you know, little did we know that those words that were spoken in that PSA would come to light just a few days later on this weekend. But those words are not just, just words. They are action behind them. And so we'll continue to share that message with our community. Assistant Principals Week, ELOP enrollment, and we recognize John Muir Day as well. Our focus on building our strategic plan, we are really close to starting the phase of coming out to school faculties, getting feedback, surveys and those sorts of things that will start happening in May. So we're really looking forward to engaging our community and our teachers as we move from addressing things just as they come up and haphazard, to really creating a unified plan so that we stop trying to address things in what I call a whack-a-mole fashion. Those of you that have played that game know what happens, right? Just when you think you've gotten ahead, tons of things pop up. And that's why a strategic plan and a facilities plan are vital to being able to do that. And so the other thing we're working to engage our kids on why you need to be in school, why you need to finish strong. And as I conclude this report, I think we have a very quick video that we wanted to show that our kids created on why it's important to be at school. If we can't get it, we don't want to waste time tonight, so we'll show it next week. We'll show that next week. Anyway, it's our students saying why they need to be in school and on time. And I love it, if you haven't watched it, how it ends. If all else fails, that lunch pass or that ability to leave campus, that works. And that's what a student highlighted. Final thing before I turn it back over to our board president, we had a great opportunity today, recognition by Navigate 360. And they're here in the back. I want to shout out for their work and partnership. You know, we did something unprecedented in Visalia. We changed our school calendar to do Alice Active Shooter Training, because we felt it was so urgent that we get that first line of training to our staff. And so today, they came by to recognize the work of the district team and putting that together. And so I want to thank that team for being here tonight and for that recognition as a district. A lot more work to do, but it's a great start. And so thank you for your partnership.
Agenda item 4.2, Visalia Unified School District Quarter Three Report, Superintendent Shrum and Executive Cabinet.
Thank you, Madam President, Board Members and Community. As our ongoing commitment to this board about being transparent, tonight, we bring to you, sorry, I was turning it too soon. I'm trying to go fast, our quarter three report. Every quarter, of course, we're bringing to you information back. Why are we doing this? Our board said that we need, as a district and our community asked for us to be more transparent about where we are, how are we doing as a district? And so we're going to do a little bit of an accelerated quarter three report tonight, because the board members have the information, as does the community. So we're just going to spotlight one or two things versus going over the full report like we normally do. And so then if you have any follow-up questions or things, you can certainly let us know. I do think it's important to point out that why we're doing this is because in August, our board came together and they said, we need to clarify what we mean and what we want to see in the district. Because if you don't say that, if you don't have the North Star, if you don't have a goal, then any road will get you somewhere, all those sorts of things, right? And so now, our board has said, here's what we believe and we're committed to. We are not there yet. That's not the reality for every kid, teacher, student, parent in our school system. So how do we start to move down that road of measuring where we are now to where we want to be? The strategic plan, of course, will be part of that, but then the quarterly report on how do we start to bring information back to the board on return on investment and other sorts of things. So I'm going to go through those and go ahead and turn it over to our first section, Business Services.
Accelerate. Good evening, President Gamoyan and members of the board. Happy to share just a few highlights from our Business Services team. Very proud of the work that these folks do and ensure that, you know, in Business Services, our responsibility is really in support of the things that happen in the classroom and with students and, and staff and making sure they have the support, the services and supports that they need to be successful. I'm going to highlight just a couple of things. First is our attendance. Attendance is really not just our funding, but it's also ensures that students are in their classroom and learning. Our attendance overall percentage is up from prior fiscal years, but we're still below where we were pre-pandemic. So we're just above 93% pre- pandemic. We are in the 95, 96 percentage. So it does have an impact on, on district funding, but it also means that we have students who are not in their classrooms. This is the time of year when we also look at our average daily attendance. Again, we are up from prior fiscal years, but down from pre-pandemic. So that's one of the areas to highlight. Again, a lot of work happening right now as we're just closing out, getting ready to close out this fiscal year, looking at purchase orders and things that are being issued. And we issued over 4,000 in third quarter alone. I think with our cutoff being last week, we probably issued 4,000 last week as well, but we'll bring that back next time. And then just again, finishing strong, getting ready to close out our fiscal year, getting ready for year-end closing, getting ready to bring the board a 23-24 budget in June. And so those are some of the things that we're working on, as well as a few projects. And most importantly, our network redundancy project to ensure that we have consistent network operations. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. DeMayo.
Hello all, Superintendent Shrum, President Gamoyan, board members and my colleagues and friends here tonight. I am here tonight to share with you a few updates as where we're looking in educational services. Just as a reminder, educational services, our job is to make sure our students get what they need to be successful, whatever it takes. So the metrics we're going to talk tonight, talk a little bit about what that looks like. And I made sure I used font like native too, so that it'd be easy for you to see. But just a few highlights, what, what this shows you is, is the progress we've made, sometimes positive, sometimes negative. So for example, when we look at an ELOP, we see the incredible growth we've made, which isn't surprising because we didn't have something like this before. But what's most exciting about this one is our enrollment for summer school. You know, summer school is still a month away and we've almost filled up half the seats in the, in the campaign. Super excited about that. Another thing that we're really excited about is the work that's been done on attendance. And while we know we're not where we need to be, we are very excited to say that chronic absenteeism, which y'all know, is when a student is missed more than 10% of the school year, has been almost cut in half. So we were at like 36% last year. Now we're at 19%. And I have to thank teachers for that, because we know kids come to school because of you guys, right? It's not because of anything I do or, you know, my tire, whatever. They come because you make the place where they need to be. So thank you so much for that. Some areas that we're not quite as excited about, when we look at things like suspension, identification for special education, that just shows us that we've got some work to do in that area. And Mr. Shrum and I are going to be talking a little bit more about that tonight. So coming up, some of the things to kind of share with you. Again, we've talked a little bit about what summer school is going to look like. Lots of exciting things happening for ELOP next year. Lots of new offerings for our families, lots of great things happening this summer. Family and community resources, again, our goal is to make sure that our students feel welcome and encouraged and feel good about what's going on. And y'all are probably aware, we've spent some time really diving into our special education supports, really analyzing what that's going to look like, how we could do things differently. And we're excited about bringing some information to y'all in the next couple of weeks to talk about what that's going to look like. All right. Now I have the pleasure of inviting up my friend, Mr. Dylan.
Thank you. Apparently, I took the horrifically long way to get up here. I apologize. But good evening, Superintendent Shrum, Board President Gamoyan, members of the board and our school community. Just want to take a couple of minutes, like my colleagues have, to review some of our quarter three data. Really, what, like Mr. DeMayo shared, I know that's a lot of text up there, but something I want to kind of point out is that we've maintained fairly steady in our certificated positions in terms of filling vacant positions, tendency, obviously, during the school year, less shifting of that compared with classified positions. We're still in terms of filling subpositions over 95% with our certificated, which is, is great news. One of the areas that where I'm very excited to see growth is in our classified, both recruitment, hiring and our sub-fill rate. So that's just been a renewed sort of focus and area of energy for our team. So that's just been a renewed sort of focus and area of energy for our team. Dr. Serena Arias and others have really put in a lot of effort and being creative. I'll talk about some of those activities that they've been doing. But you can see we've brought over 94 new classified employees in this last quarter. Also, you can see our our fill rates for subs were hovering around the 30%ish area. And that's now up into a 48%, close to 50%. So I know there's a lot of room for improvement still and finding people who are, you know, excited and ready to work is still something we're committed to doing. But we are seeing growth and that's encouraging to see. Some of the other areas that I'll point out, continuing to support teachers and administrators through educator support. And Rob and Arakry and their team are doing just an ongoing amazing job. They continue to connect and meet with teachers regularly, lots of support that happens there. And then also I think maybe less sexy, but really important is the work that Kevin Mays and his team do in benefits and risk management. So one thing I want to share and kind of highlight, if you look at quarter three, this is something, there's, there's lots of information and then details that go into this. When you look up there, you can see 140 injuries, that's cumulative over the course of of the year. But and you look at 1,438 days lost from work. But what I will tell you is we have lots of data on this and we work with Keenan Associates and others to help inform how this happens. The current data on that also shows that had we not have our return to work program that allows employees support, opportunities, resources to come back to work to continue earning employment, providing accommodations and supports to allow them to do so, we would have, we actually have saved and gained 2,300 days of work. So that return to work program has, you know, you can see we'd have two thirds more had we not had that in place. And so sometimes the existing numbers don't tell the full story. So appreciate that team and the work that they do. Just kind of like I said, some of the things that we are doing that we continue to do, we have expanded our recruitment efforts for both certificated classified staff. One of the things that's been a little unique this year and compared to years past is how we've gone about recruiting for classified positions. So classified positions are something that oftentimes folks aren't real familiar with our ed joint system. We still continue to house postings there, but we work in lots of other creative ways to work with industry partners, community based organizations. We actually have a job fair tomorrow where our team will be out at the industrial park over off of, I think it's Shirk over there. I think it's Shirk. It might be Plaza. Check. And working with Workforce Investment Board and others to help recruit and kind of meet people where they're coming already. So some exciting ways where we continue to do that. We are also partnering with Visalia Dobbs Adult School this last week and had a resource and job fair where we were present there as well. You can see some of those pictures. And then we are, as we work right now, we are filling positions for next year, have all of our in district postings that have gone out in district positions happening for all of our current VTA members to look at additional opportunities, new options going into next year. And once we come through that process, then we'll begin recruiting outside of the district. And so we do anticipate actually holding a VUSD teacher fair coming up in May.
All right. Good evening, Board President Superintendent Shrum, Board Members, Community. Thank you guys for being here tonight. We are moving quickly. We'll get there. Give us just a moment. So learning and leadership, I wanted to just hit a couple of highlights here. So on our top part, we're looking at GPAs for high school and middle school. And I'll say that, you know, we're looking at over 90% of our students above a 2.3 in middle school, over almost 80% in high school. And this is a testament to our teachers, the staff, the work as, you know, this is a busy time of school year. And just to continue to work with students, keep helping them get back, get over that threshold and keep trying and keep going and keep moving as AP tests and many things are coming up ahead, just a lot of that tireless work that students are putting in, but also that staff's putting in. And we're seeing those numbers increase in the positive of students performing and qualifying for extracurricular activities and other things like that. And the next one you'll see is I Ready. I Ready. As we know, we've been getting a lot more consistent with that case six. We're seeing incremental positive growth there as well in both EOL and math in case six and something that we've been targeting, working on and learning more about it. It's still a newer program in our district. So there's a lot of different components to it. That kind of as over time, we keep building out and looking at that. Next slide here, just someone to highlight in our early learning department as many people are aware of TK. And that that grade continues to get younger and younger in those ages. And we're seeing more and more students continue to enroll in that. And so we're seeing a huge increase of enrollment in TK and also in preschools. As much as we have availability, we have it being filled there. So just a couple of things that we're working on, but obviously we're ready, we're working on launching for next year, right? And to provide clarity and focus on resources that we have for teachers. Obviously, we're hitting the finish line right now. We're working hard to get to the finish line and everyone understands that. But also just trying to prepare so we can have more clarity at the beginning of the year, have very consistent across our district. So that way we continue to build off of one another. Our students have a coherent education all the way through and just appreciate the work that sites are doing and leaders are doing to continue that work. At this time, I will hand it over to Mr. Care.
All right. Good evening, President Gomoyan, Superintendent Shrum, members of the board, colleagues and friends. A couple of things from operations this evening. There we go. So we're continuing on our same same categories, measurements, really in facilities, it's all about projects. The things, thing to remember on projects, we've got lots of projects that are going on, but we're slowly getting them completed. You'll notice in the third quarter, we didn't complete any projects this quarter because the projects that were now underway, some of the middle schools, La Jolla, are going to be longer term projects that are going to take us into next year. So next quarter, when we get into next quarter, we'll have a couple of projects completed. Nutritional Services, the big win there is we can continue to have an increase of students utilizing the no cost breakfast and lunch, which is really good. We're happy to see that. Transportation, I'm going to share a little bit in a second about transportation. Still not where we want to be with our on time, 80% in the morning, 60% in the PM is really just not acceptable to us. But I'm going to talk in a couple of minutes about things that we're doing about that. Maintenance, work order is really about work order completion. We're also, I'm going to share a little bit in a couple of minutes about the things that we're putting in place to to refine our work order system so that we can keep better track of work orders, better manage the work orders at the site level. And then really custodial and grounds, just about the amount of space, they've started an extensive process. If you've noticed around the district, the trees are trimmed, the the grass is greener, lots of lots of curb appeal increase. That's really to our credit to our custodial and our grounds team, putting a robust preventative maintenance plan in pray in place for that. So some of the things that we're working on, action steps, really it's the lead time, we continue to struggle with lead time on getting equipment for our projects, mainly air conditioning, heating and air conditioning equipment, electrical equipment. So it takes about 10 to 12 months for that stuff to come in. So what we've done is we've started ordering the materials ahead of the project. And so we're doing that and that that material is starting to come in. The exciting thing about about transportation, our transfinder system is on schedule to roll out and go live in August. That will be our mechanized routing system. The nice thing about this system is we will know what what kids are on what bus, what time they got on the bus, what bus they're supposed to be on. And parents will have access to a route finder app on their phone. Think about your Amazon package. It's 10 stops away. Think about knowing your kid's bus is five stops away from your house. So that's coming in August. We're really excited about that. The other thing that we're working on is some alternative recruitment options, especially for transportation, some different job descriptions, some combination job descriptions to to better recruit and retain bus drivers because we are still struggling to fill bus drivers. And then again, as I mentioned, tech services to better refine our work order system so that we can have management of our sites and separate those things that are repairs from those things that are kind of modifications for school sites. So that's it for me. I think Andre, you're next.
Thank you. Good evening, Board President Gomoyan, members of the board, Superintendent Shrum. We're going to go over quickly the superintendent's office. And so again, I just want to thank Delia, Monica and Felisa, just for all the the amazing work that they do. It's not just working with the board, but it's working with the community to make everything ready even for nights like this, right? For the for the board meeting. And so just some quick highlights on the data, just like our other colleagues, we're really focused on a few things, not many, right? So we're really focused, putting on these like a laser like focus. So one of them is is a site visits. And so you see that the superintendent continues to be active with sites, 93 visits for the entire year at this point. This does not include for last quarter, the 24 visits in the evening and and also in the weekends to plays and those type of things. So that's, that's not in here. Communications, we continue and we heard a lot and clear from the board as well as the community about really being transparent with our with our communications and our posts. And so we've had a post every single day and sometimes on the weekends and sometimes celebrating, you know, a lot of our staff. Because you know, a district is not an entity. It's it's all of you. It's everybody that's in this room, right? It's people. And so we really want to celebrate the great work that's happened in Visalia. So we've increased really our engagement and and our followers and this number of 1,400. Next time we we meet for the fourth quarter in June will be, I believe, double that amount. And so that's just in one year. So we've really increased that. So I wanted to thank everybody for sharing out and and really encouraging their followers to follow our, you know, our social media. And then the last piece I want to mention is just our engagements. So besides meeting with the sites and besides just going out there to to visit classes, it's also about engaging with the community. So the strong partnership with like by set police department doesn't happen overnight, but it's really by engaging on a consistent basis and building that relationship. And so the superintendent and the staff has really gone out to develop engagements through one by second connected through our our strategic plan, work team. And in this quarter coming up, the listing sessions that the superintendent spoke about. So look forward to those. There'll be many of them. Our goal is to to not only have all the schools covered with listing sessions, but also have many community events as well. What we hear from parents, we hear from business leaders, from our faith based organizations, everybody who's been a part of one by select connected. And so for our action steps, it just continued to work on those things, systems, processes, procedures around how we support not only the board, but also the the community and our district and work on the strategic plan. That's really our our main focus, that and one by self connected. So just wrapping up this, again, just here from all of our colleagues, really it's about having laser like focus, looking at those systems, processes and procedures and making sure that we have those types. So our our students, our staff, our families are well equipped to be successful so that we finish strong for 2023, 24. Okay. And then you'll this presentation.
Thank you. Is there any board comment? All right, we're going to move on to our next agenda, agenda item 4.3, creating safe, supportive and innovative learning environments superintendent.
All right. Well, thank you again, Board President Gomoyan, Board Members and our teacher, staff and community. Thank you for being here tonight. We, before we move and we have a special section of public comment that's going to occur following this report. And so looking forward to hearing the voices of our teachers and others that are assembled today. And so thank you so much for being here. And we did want to take a moment in time to talk about why this is a report. And I want to reference, you, you can read the agenda. I don't need to go over all of that. But again, back last fall, summer, our board said and came together on what is it we really believe and we're committed to doing? And being clear about that. And so I applaud this board for being clear about saying, all students can achieve at high levels and demonstrate growth. Family and community engagement is key to success. And learning environment should be safe, supportive and secure, which is why many of our guests are here in attendance tonight. I talk about this topic. And you can see under each of those categories, some of the commitments that align with the belief. You will see this now go from this into the design of strategic plan. And why the quarter three and and all of the data is important is because we're generating baselines of where we are in connection to now what our board believes and is committed to doing. So now what we do is we have to take that and start to track out, okay, if this is where we are now, where do we want to be? Because we know that when you take and read each one of those beliefs and commitments, that is not the reality for every single student, teacher, staff, school, family member, right? But you don't, and you can't create a goal unless you declare what you believe and you're committed to doing. And so this was key foundational work that our board engaged in back in the fall that led us to the point and being able to begin to quantify some of this work. So I appreciate our board for declaring this. And now we're on the journey of accountability, which you already heard, and as we build up systems. So why is this so important? We live in a changed world. You know, I had the opportunity to meet with the UTA President Greg Price every two weeks. And we, of course, more meetings than that, but officially every two weeks. And talking about what is happening out there. What are experiences that we're seeing in the classroom? And of course, for most of us, myself, most of the team, even our school principals, none of us have been in the classroom since the pandemic for sure. And for some of us, as far as a teacher in the classroom, I've been in a classroom since, you know, a few years ago when I was a teacher of fifth grade, a lot has changed. And so we have to take a moment in time to listen and recognize we have a new kind of reality that we're dealing with now. And so one thing I do know for sure is that the solutions to the things we're experiencing are going to be unique to Visalia and they're going to come from the voices of our community. That just teachers, that is leaders, that is parents, yes, that is students have to have a voice in this. It is everybody coming together to decide what are we going to do to tackle the problems that we have. It is our job as a board to set the conditions for our school leaders to be successful. Our school leaders set the conditions for teachers to be successful and teachers create the conditions for students to be successful. We talk a lot about the role of the district and that's one of the things that we've been working on clarifying. So while we ourselves do not necessarily go in to a classroom, we impact conditions at the district level to help school leaders. School leaders impact those conditions to help teachers, teachers impact those conditions to help students. So we know that what we're experiencing today is something that everyone is grappling with, not just in Visalia, but in in communities across the nation. We saw an example this weekend, again, of 16 and I believe it was 14, making a stupid mistake that's going to cost them and haunt them. And that's not something we want. And so we know as an educational entity, how do we get out ahead of those things? It's through education, it's through engagement, it's through connectivity, it's through the examples we saw at Riverway that we highlighted in the spotlight. That's how we get ahead and prevent those things from happening. And we believe there are a lot of things that we're working on currently that will help do that. But we'll be the first to admit, and and I know I'm new to Visalia and a lot of people don't know me, but you've probably seen a theme of reports tonight that we're also very transparent. You're always going to know from me what we're doing, but you're also going to know from me what we need to improve on. And I think that's what you're going to hear in the reports tonight, and that's what we owe this community. I can't go back and change how things may have been in the past or, you know, what might have been said and done or not done. But what I can tell you is what we're going to do, who I am and how we're going to move forward. So I'm looking forward. I appreciate the UTA. I appreciate our teachers and our staff being here tonight. I appreciate the opportunity to hear from our speakers here in just a couple of minutes. So thank you for being here tonight and the opportunity to hear your voice. And so having said that, I want to turn it over now to Assistant Superintendent De Mayo, who's going to talk a little bit about where we are, the reality of the moment, what we're doing about it, how we're making pivots in the moment. And then I'm going to come back and wrap it up with what is our commitment going forward? And then we will move into public comment on item 4.3. So Mr. De Mayo.
Thank you, sir. So again, once again, thank you all for having me back here tonight. As Mr. Shrum suggested, we've had a lot, we have a lot of work to do. What I wanted to just cover real quick was just a couple of reminders for us about how we start things, how we create policies, how we create the expectations for what we want our students to look like and behave like in the classroom. So we start with education code and then our district takes education code. And that's where we create policies and procedures based on what the law tells us to do. But where, again, those of you that know me know that I really like change. I like change. I like to solve problems. I like when things are different. But what we recognized early on in this system is with all the change that has been taking place and all the great systems that we have currently going, where we have fallen a bit on is that communication piece so that everybody knows that they're in existence, right? Y'all are teachers out here and many of you up on the board has done the same thing. Our lessons are only as good as our ability to be able to share them with our group, right? And if people don't know what they are, how are they supposed to lead that work? So we want to talk a little bit about the tools we have in place, the foundation that is in existence and how we want to correct some of the challenges that we've experienced thus far. So just talking about some of the things that the board has invested in this year, we've made unprecedented investments in both staff and also programs. This year alone, we've added over 100 staff members to address the changing face of our classrooms that Mr. Shrum talked about earlier. You can see things like school counselors. You can see things like school counselors, social workers, lots of new managers who can lead the work for the work that that we're doing. The Expanded Learning Opportunity Program. All of these are opportunities to help our students connect with schools and to be better at what we need them to do in the classroom. Another investment are the campaigns that we've started. You've heard a little bit already about the Alice Campaign and how we worked on with that. The Raptor Verkata Systems, those are new security systems on our school sites where we're going to see enhanced security systems, Transfinder. Another one I wanted to just point out is the Champions in Campus Life Supports. You know, one of the things Mr. Schrum has directed us to work on is that idea of one by say a connected, right? We know that with the work we're doing today, teachers can't do it all, right? You have the kids for seven hours. It's ludicrous to expect you to solve every problem of the world. So how can we connect our community to realize they play a part in this too? One of the examples of these new partnerships we have set up that we're really excited because again, we know that we've got to address the the problems in the community, in the homes. So these partnerships are going to allow us to do that and also support the work in the classroom. So I wanted to just show a couple examples of those wonderful systems that I've created. I mean, look at it's beautiful, right? It's colored. It's got all the lines. It's got all the graphics on there. Most of you guys know that I'm married to a teacher, so I get to go home and talk about all these great things that, you know, I'm we do in the classroom and how, you know, awesome I think I am. And then she's quick to point out, she's like, what are you talking about? I've never seen that before. It it's a good reminder for me like, oh, okay, well, I I know where this exists, but does everybody else? So one of the things we've recognized is we need to do a better job making sure y'all know about these great tools and what that's going to look like and what we need to do with it. Another example that Mr. Schrum talked about earlier is that threat assessment protocol, right? Every threat that happens in a school system is serious and needs to be investigated, everyone. And this talks about how exactly that needs to happen. So one of the things that we're going to be working on is how do we correct that, right? How do we address the issues that are happening right now and work towards making things better in the future? So some of the things that we have been doing immediately is that recognition that wow, we need to take a step back and make sure that our staff and users know where these tools are so that they best know how to utilize them. We're also trying to do some what we're calling out of the box thinking. You know, we've talked a lot about the different face of education nowadays, right? What what are our students coming to us with? How is it different than it was last year? You know, I have been, I haven't been in the classroom for over a decade, right? So every year that goes by, I lose the ability to say, well, you know, when I was a teacher, when I was in the classroom. But it's a lot different. So how are we able to think differently about what we want to do? So we spent some time with our high school principals thinking about, okay, right now, we're not worrying about money. We're not worrying about the law. Sorry, Megan. We're worrying about what can we do differently that will give our students a better opportunity to be successful? And our teachers and staff members a better chance to be able to work through their time. I've listed some other things up there. One of the things Mr. Schrum is going to talk to us about is that notion of finishing strong. So right now, we've got two important initiatives going on. How can we finish the year strong and how can we prepare to start the year even stronger? One of the things we're committed to doing is making sure that that communication lapse that we've talked about is corrected. So that on the first day of school, everybody has clarity on what this needs to look like, how we need to offer support, where to find those tools and where to go if you have questions. We're really excited about that. And then, Mr. Schrum, come talk to us about more about the future.
Thank you. And and that was very expediated. So thank you. And I and I hope people do take a moment to read this report and see this work. And we are committed to continuous improvement. And so we know things that we need to do better. We're going to hear from teachers tonight on things that we need to focus on and think about and make sure are included in how we're approaching these things. That voice is important. We do know we've got to find additional alternatives for students who need extra support. Who we want to get back to the classroom, right? But they might be causing disruption. And we've all been a teacher, even though I haven't been post pandemic. One kid disrupting a classroom and preventing twenty five or thirty, depending on how many kids are in the classroom, from learning is one too many, right? And so we have to figure out what is the right thing that we can do within the scope of ed code to address those challenges. How do we do behavior replacement or change? We are changing the convocation model to allow our teachers to work together. So we're not going to bring everyone down to the Marriott this summer. On that day, similar to what we did in February, teachers are going to be able to spend the whole day back together again and talking about two things. One, how do we start strong with classrooms, routines, procedures? And thank you. I'm not going to let you escape without maybe like a five minute video for me, right? But and then the afternoon will be spent on academic, like what are the units that we're going to teach the first few weeks of school? And so it will be very similar to what you experienced in February. And again, all the part of how do we start strong? So that maybe this time next year, we find ourselves in a different place than where we find ourselves this time this year. And then finally, our overall goal is to identify, address what needs to be improved by listening to and involving our students, teachers, staff and families. And so we're committed to that. And that is also part of what this evening is for. And so, Madam President, that concludes my report. I'll return it back to you for any questions.
Thank you. Any board comment or questions? Okay, I I just would like to say thank you, my friends out there, my fellow teachers for being here. And we want to hear what you have to say. So we're going to start with Greg Price.
First of all, a big shout out to all the people in the overflow room. I know you're there. Thank you for hanging in there.
Thank you, teachers for hanging in there.
Let's get right on it. Since I'm already on the clock. Tonight, we come before the board to discuss safety and discipline in Visalia Unified School District. We want to start by saying that ninety eight percent of our students do what they're supposed to do with few or no issues every single day. We should celebrate these students. However, ninety eight percent of our students are deeply affected by the two percent who are disrupting the learning environment, bringing violence to our schools and showing blatant disrespect to staff. Two percent doesn't sound like a lot, but with thirty thousand students, that is roughly six hundred students are that are creating educational havoc in our schools. These students are creating a deep and profound effect on our school culture. Morale is negatively affected by the constant issues that students bring. Students are fearful when dealing with many of these students and things have to change. The three main issues tonight are, one, those students who wander the campus and who are constantly tardy and refuse to attend class. Two, students who disrupt the classroom learning environment. And three, the violence towards students and staff. We also want to make it clear that we are not here to attack anybody or point fingers. We also want to make it clear that there are some teachers who would not speak tonight for fear of retaliation against themselves or against their site administrator. We are not here to complain about site administration. We are here tonight because we have a systemic problem, a community problem, but one that is solvable. We must engage parents with these students who are chronically creating problems at our school sites. The parents must be responsible as partners to help us solve this misbehavior. We also want to make it clear that the behavior issues are not just to remain to Visalia, but part of a nationwide problem. We are aware that the district has a plan. However, the question is, is the plan effective if nothing changes or the behavior continues? Our discipline system can look comprehensive on paper, but is it solving our issues? We need to pair appropriate consequences with support and counseling. They are both important, but appropriate consequences often seem to be missing. Additionally, progressive discipline seems to be missing as well. Many teachers have given up reporting incidents because they feel like they won't get support and too often those issues go unaddressed. This is not the first time we've spoken to the board about this issue. We are here because this problem has not been solved and the consequences for not solving discipline and safety is the learning loss that is suffered by our students. We need to ask ourselves the questions, what do we want our schools to be? And what do we want kids' learning environment to be? Thank you.
Stacy Day.
You have a different order? That's okay.
Oh, what Stacy Day? I have a, okay, because I have a little list here.
Oh, sorry. Yes, I am. Okay. Good morning or good morning. Good evening, board members. Um, I am here to speak on the behalf of teachers for the elementary elopers and wanderers. Teachers and staff across elementary schools are seeing a rise in what is termed elopers. These are students that decide that they are leaving the classroom without permission and bolt out the door. Then they wander the school sites. This is a short list of things we see with these wanderers every day. We see students who leave the classroom whenever they feel like it. Students who refuse to enter the classroom after breaks or lunches. Administrators who chase or observe these students for hours. Administrators who try to convince the students to return to class and tantrums outside and sometimes inside the classrooms. This behavior affects the school in many adverse ways. Some students now think they have the right to leave the classroom whenever they want. This is a safety concern as the student is unsupervised. The classroom teacher cannot abandon their class to try and bring that student back to class. Some of these students then bang on doors of other classrooms, disrupting the learning environment. Sometimes these students run into other classrooms to yell and scream. This requires the site staff to locate and follow this student, sometimes for hours. This behavior takes resources that are desperately needed for other students to supervise one student who has defiantly left their classroom. And I can speak from my time in teaching that I have had to teach from a window. I have had to teach from the doorway in order to watch students who go outside and play while I stand there away from my students who desperately need me. And I don't know how that is effective as a teacher for them.
Thank you. Michelle Alvarez.
Hi, I'm, I've been with the district for thirty three years. And I've spoken in front of the board before. I don't do it very often. But this is a very important issue. Okay, teachers across the secondary sites are seeing a rise in students who choose not to attend class. Instead, they wander the school site without supervision, vandalizing school property and causing disruption all around the campus. This is a short list of things we see with these wanderers every day. We see students who kick and bang on doors and enter random classrooms to yell and disrupt learning. We see students who use their cell phones to send coded messages to encourage other students to elope from class and set up fights. We see students who spend their time out of class vandalizing restrooms and other parts of the campus. We see students who refuse to enter the classroom after breaks or lunch. We see administrators and staff who are cursed at or receiving obscene gestures when they ask a student to go to class. We see administrators and staff who try to convince the student to return to class. We see students who miss twenty to thirty minutes of a period on a regular basis because they don't feel like being on time. This ba- behavior affects the schools in many adverse ways. Some of these students are overtly defiant. They refuse to listen to any staff, including site principals and campus supervisors. They curse and use obscene gestures and tell staff, you can't F and do anything to me. These students represent safety risks for the site. These students are also losing the opportunity to learn. They're missing the core instruction. And when they don't receive instruction for their classes, they end up falling behind and then failing these classes. Here are two specific examples from my site. At my site, wandering students ripped down the smoke alarms in the boys bathroom, leaving the bathrooms out of service. At my site, administration tried to make a deal with one of the students saying, hey, if you'll attend six out of seven classes a day, we'll let you skip one of your, the class of your choice every day. This problem has reached crisis proportions. Please help us get students to class.
Tina Smith.
Good evening. My name is Tina Smith and I am a five, six combo teacher at Pinkham. I will be addressing disruption to the learning environment in an elementary classroom. Teachers and staff across the elementary schools are seeing a rise in disturbing behavior. This is a short list of things we see in classrooms every day. We see students who throw tantrums, students who take things off walls, overt defiance, passive defiance, running out of the classroom, taking others' things, harassment of fellow students and cursing. What you might not understand is that when an elementary student throws a tantrum, learning is not only disruptive, but often halts altogether. The teacher will evacuate the room as these students rage through the classroom. They destroy everything in the room, and there are multiple pictures to prove this. The overt defiance combined with overt behaviors creates a safety hazard, not only for defiant students, but for the entire class. For instance, when a student refuses to leave when there's a fire drill, hopefully, hopefully never a real fire. It becomes a safety issue for everyone. Students with passive defiance are also a safety hazard. These students don't necessarily create havoc, but their refusal to do anything limp body can pose risks in an emergency. The constant interruptions continue with students who constantly harass their fellow students. Those students cannot learn in a classroom environment in which they are constantly being taken off task. There are many other behaviors that disrupt the mission of teaching elementary school students. We need to continue to pair consequences for misbehavior with counseling to support for the student. We need to remember that ninety eight percent of our students are generally on task. The two percent continue to make ninety eight percent challenge, teaching the ninety eight percent challenging and sometimes impossible. Every week at my site, I have students who plead with me to get the disruptions to stop. It's heartbreaking for me to see these students who want to learn and they cannot.
So I'm here to talk to you today about the disruptions in our classrooms at the secondary level. So, um, so good evening, School Board President Gomoyan and School Board Members. My name is Stephen Delgado. I'm the current Vice President of our local VUTA Teachers Union. Over the course of twenty years, seven years, teaching both middle school and high school, I've seen profound changes in the teaching environment. I'm here today to talk to you about the disrupting behaviors we are experiencing. The lack of effective policies and leadership within the district has led to the rise in overt defiance, excessive cellphone and earbud distractions, excessive tardies with little to no repercussions, students wandering in and outside the classroom without permission, racism, bigotry, hate speech on our campuses, and the profound vulgarity becoming normalized. And a course of the day, you can hear a student, excuse my language, and say fuck you to either their peers or any one of our staff or administrators routinely. We have staff members that are called, forgive me again, niggers. Or yesterday, a teacher was told, you can't trust black people in the classroom, in a classroom. When another student said, you can't say that, the the student just responded, I'm a racist. And the teacher is losing faith in the VUSD. I heard several teachers surrounding students, surrounding a teacher in order to intimidate him when he tried to intervene in a situation outside the classroom between periods. Routinely, out of control students feel free to threaten violence of staff members without any fear. Students respond to clear defined expectations, but when the district lacks these expectations and lacks the accountability for these in inexcusable actions, we all lose. Just in conclusion, I want you to know that several new teachers have talked to me about how they are disheartened by Visalia Unified and they are planning to either leave the district or leave potentially our site. They are in desperation. We have about half of our teaching staff at all throughout Visalia Unified has less than five years. And we are, we are teaching them that this is normalized behavior. We are not going to hold on to these type of young educators if we do not act now. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ashley Chavez and I'm a third grade teacher. And today I will be speaking on violence towards students and staff at the elementary school level. Teachers and staff across the elementary schools are seeing a rise in violent behavior manifesting itself in the classrooms. This is just a short list of things we see every single day. This is just a short list of things we see every single day. Throwing objects at staff and students, including desks and chairs, verbal threats of violence, including threats to kill their teacher, myself included, and fellow classmates. Verbal threats of gun violence or threats to bomb the school. Bringing weapons to school, attacking staff, attacking other students, fights and cursing. Unfortunately, we have seen an increase in violent behavior across all elementary schools. Students throwing tantrums will try and hurt people in the classroom. And this leads to teachers evacuating classrooms and a significant loss of student learning. Students in the class experienced trauma watching the misbehavior that the two percent exhibit. I have to watch students with fear in their eyes look at me anytime these incidents occur because they no longer feel safe. Elementary students hit, curse, threaten their teachers and other students in the classroom and out of the classroom. We even have students who threaten gun violence, which is not an issue we take lightly. We need to take appropriate consequences paired with support and counseling for the students to commit these behaviors. Personally, how can I, how can our teachers come to class every day feeling like my life and my well-being is in constant danger? I will not continue to subject myself and my students to such trauma. And for that reason, I will not be returning to VUSD after one year of working in a profession that I love so much. Thank you.
Madeline, and could you say your last name for me?
Yes, Schneeman.
Thank you.
German for snowman. It's less intimidating for the kids when I tell them that. Good evening, I am Madeline Schneeman, a seventh and eighth grade math teacher at Green Acres Middle School, speaking on violence towards students and staff. Teachers and staff across the secondary sites are seeing a rise in violent behavior manifesting itself in classrooms and the campus. This too is just a short list of the things we see every day. We see verbal threats of violence, including threats to kill their teacher and fellow students, verbal and written threats of gun violence and threats to bomb the school, the assaulting of staff, the attacking of other students, fights and now large groups, excessive cursing, disturbing racist slurs, sexual harassment, intimidation, and extortion. We hear about these issues all the time and unfortunately, they are a common occurrence. Students and staff are put in harm's way because of the behaviors aforementioned. There are constant fights at our secondary schools. Teachers and staff are being hurt breaking up these fights. There's gang violence at many of our sites. Students are honestly afraid to go to the bathroom outside of break time. Students threaten others and are bringing weapons to our school sites. We need appropriate consequences to be paired with the support and counseling of the students who commit these behaviors. Personally, while pregnant this year, a student shoulder checked me after refusing to stop after jumping the fence. Just days before leaving for maternity leave, a student told me, fuck you, I hope your baby dies because I wouldn't allow him to listen to YouTube while working a Saturday Academy to help my failing students. I've only been back a week and I have been blatantly ignored. I've been told fuck you and called a fucking bitch more than ten times. These are only a few personal incidences and don't begin to represent those that are also being endured by my colleagues regularly. Thank you.
Cindy Jacobson. Sorry. My name is Cindy Jacobson. I'm an eighth grade teacher at Willow Glen. Pardon me? Move the mic, okay, I'm sorry, trying not to cry. Our world has changed. I've been teaching forty-four years and I love teaching, you know that. But in the last few years, there has been a significant shift in student misconduct. It is out of control. And we know that some of these behaviors are due to external factors such as addiction, trauma, poverty, and mental illness. It's imperative that we address these issues in a proactive and effective manner. In addition to addressing the negative behaviors, we also must provide support for these students that they're talking about who are obviously struggling with underlying issues. Although hiring more school counselors is a great step, it isn't enough. Many of our students need more than checking in and checking out. They need more than a little break outside of the classroom to learn how to regulate their emotions. In fact, they're making their own breaks. The increase in disruptive violent behavior is threatening the safety of students and our staff. And it creates a hostile environment that negates learning for all students and may, and we know through research, does result in long-term consequences for their peers. This can't be tolerated any longer. Research is showing that when students are exposed to constant disruptions and negative behaviors in the classroom, they are more likely to experience. Experience, these are not the disruptors. These are that ninety-eight percent academic failure, increased stress, increased anxiety, lower levels of engagement in school. And the research is showing long-term economic effects into adulthood if that is the environment they're in. Think about it. Some of our youngest children think that's what school is, that's all they've ever known. We have first graders that don't know any other world except what these people are describing. The USD must take immediate action to provide alternative placements for students who repeatedly exhibit disruptive and violent behaviors. And those aren't my words, I pulled those directly from the research. These students deserve an environment that is equipped to give them the tools they require to function successfully in a classroom environment while also ensuring the safety and well-being of other students and staff. Currently, our well-behaved students who want to learn are in a most restrictive environment. We teachers are not therapists, we're not trained to be counselors or social workers. We do not have the school and classroom personnel to support students who exhibit extremely disruptive and violent behaviors. We are responsible for planning and implementing instruction, but our work is constantly being interrupted with explosive behaviors across campuses and in classrooms. Students who exhibit habitual disruptive and violent behaviors need to be in an environment that is equipped to support their unique needs. This ensures that the safety and well-being of other students and staff are not compromised. Ultimately, there can be no tolerance for the violence we've heard about, the threats and the harming of students and staff.
Thank you very much. We're going to move on to general public comment. General public comment. Do you want a minute?
Thank you. I don't know if this is on, but if it's not, you can all hear me anyway, right? Been here a long time, you've got families to go home to, you've got work to grade, you've got things to do. Thank you for being here. If you would like to leave now, they'll give you a minute to exit out if that's what you need to do. Thank you for coming tonight, thank you for the work you do with kids.
Set on tonight's agenda, be addressed at the time the item comes up for discussion by the board. To comply with the Brown Act Californian's open meeting law, board discussion is limited on items on the agenda. Therefore, when receiving public comment for items not on the agenda, the board's role is limited to receiving such comments and the board may not engage in dialogue with the public. The board thanks the public for its participation in public comment and the understanding of the board's responsibility. Pursuant board poly- policy, the board will limit individual comments to more than three minutes and individual topics to twenty minutes. It is recommended you begin your comments by stating your name. Do we have any public comment? All right. Yeah, no public comment, Ms. Smart? Okay. All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Would any board members like to pull any of the consent agenda?
I would like to pull item six point two.
Okay.
And I would like to pull item six dot two six.
Okay. Can I have, can I have motion to accept the rest of the, approve the rest of the consent agenda?
I will motion to approve the rest of the agenda.
Well, second.
Okay, on a motion by trustee Casebeers Saleno, second by trustee Belt, my mind. Could we have a vote, please?
Student Board Representative abstains and the motion passes unanimously.
Dr. Vegas, six point two.
Thank you, President Gomoyen. As with previous items, anytime I see my brother's employer, I have a brother who is employed by someone who does business with the district, I abstain out of an abundance of caution to avoid any perception of a conflict of interest.
Do I have a motion to accept?
Motion to accept.
Okay. Motion by Board Member Nayler, second by Board Member Casebeers Saleno on favor.
Student Board Representative votes yes and motion passes six with one abstention.
Dr. Odo, six point two six.
Yeah, six point two six is the minutes of the regular board meeting of March twenty-eighth, which I did not attend and I can't judge the accuracy of them or not, so I will abstain.
Do I have a motion to accept items six point two six?
All motion, second.
On a motion by Board Member Gabi, second by Board Member Nayler, all in favor.
Student Board Representative votes yes and motion passes six zero with one abstention.
We come to the cool part. So we have our board report, student board report by Mr. Tawanda Chara Muka. Did I say that right?
Oh, yes, you did.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board President. At LD Amante High School, they're hosting the minor expo week with dress of days and other events with our minor of the year being announced at the assembly on Friday. LD Amante's junior class went to the California State Leadership Conference and their theme was Dare to Disrupt. LD Amante High School's CSF members attended the annual CSF luncheon for CSF lifetime members. LD Amante hosted the takeover tour on April twentieth. There was a large crowd and the students enjoyed musical performances, a car show, live artists, and meeting community members in resource boots. Golden West High School is hosting a Special Olympics this Friday in which schools from all over the valley are going to be participating. The Golden West ASP program will be helping to run this event. This latest weekend, the Golden West High School drama program had an incredibly successful musical season with a great attendance and loving crowds for all performances. Golden West had an onsite coed volleyball tournament in which teams of Blazers competed, promoting great interaction among students on campus. Golden West would also like to recognize its virtual enterprise program for its success and thank them for their incredible work on their program and trip to New York. Mount Wendy High School had several teams and compete at the Tulare Kings Expo hosted at COS for the culinary competition. Mount Wendy had two students, Trinity Contreras placed first and William Cannon Madrid placed second. Also at this competition, Mount Wendy had two ag construction teams compete, placing fourth and fifth overall. Mount Wendy High School had ten students present at the Civic Seal of Engagement Showcase. Senior Jocelyn Corfman has been selected as a Promise Scholar by the University of California, Santa Barbara. Redwood, it's class of twenty-five, hosted an all-school talent show on Friday, April fourteenth, in the Rotary Theater. There was a great attendance and participation. The Redwood class of twenty-twenty-three hosted Powderpuff in the Mineral King Bowl where the junior and senior girls battled out during flag football. This week, Redwood is the Battle of Classes Week themed Fire and Ice. Juniors and sophomores are on one team and they compete against the freshmen and the seniors. Redwood will have a rally in the bowl this week with a series of games for the classes to compete. At Sequoia, their science department took several field trips to various locations that include mosquito vector district. XL After School took thirty-six students to visit CSU Monterey and the Monterey Bay Aquarium. Sequoia students donated blood to California Blood Bank. And this Friday, Sequoia will reward their students for their hard work on their cap testing. BCI S held a very successful open house on Thursday, April twentieth. ASP students provided tours of both east and west campuses for the current and future families who are interested in BCI S's unique and flexible learning programs. They showcased their health sciences department and many other CTE pathways. The BCI S rock band and vocal department did two performances that evening for those in attendance. BCI S ASB is preparing for Teacher Appreciation Week, the week of May eighth, and are excited to celebrate the almost sixty teachers who serve the students and families of independent study. BCI S Counseling Department is preparing for Mental Health Awareness Week with informational posters and a game day hosted by the GSA Club. Vtech held an open house for the spring semester. Students provided tours for great activities where students showcased their pathways. There was also a photo scavenger hunt for families to capture the activities in a creative way. On April twentieth, twenty-twenty-three, Garrett Kierster completed the Improc Two state finals in FFA and earned the third place. This is the highest ranking placement that a Vtech student has earned in Vtech's history. Vtech ASB is preparing for senior activities and Teacher Appreciation Week. Vtech seniors presented at the VUSD Civic Seal of Engagement Showcase, and that's it.
Thank you so much. Board member reports, trustee Belt.
My first thought is our reports that we had earlier this evening do not reflect the entire school district that I'm glad to know. And yet with the heartache of what we've heard, we want to make sure we do everything possible. And I appreciate all the administration that I have talked to in the last couple of weeks, particularly that are working tirelessly to try to make sure that our schools are safe. We have a cultural problem that is going to take all hands on deck to shift. But I think we can do it. And so I'm not, I'm not going to quit tonight and I'm glad that I know so many of you who aren't either. I enjoyed a couple of visits the last couple of weeks Ivanhoe Elementary School, which I, it's becoming a favorite school of mine. Dr. G and all of his staff have tremendous engagement happening with those students and how that school is really a hub for the community. And so I would like to see. And so I would like to see us do everything we possibly can to continue to let them know, as Dr. V was with us, that they're not just the school out there, like the school out there in Goshen, that they are very much a part of our entire system. And they know that. I was talking about the staff, but also I want the families to know. And they take great pride in their school. The Central Valley Education Coalition, I had never heard about until I signed up to go with the esteemed Superintendent of Visel United, our President Gamoyen and some other of our cabinet to actually find out that there is a group that stand with us and for us in Sacramento. So it was an amazing event. We actually, Dr. V would appreciate, we had some phenomenal cultural music that it was just part of the encouraging all of us from a school there in Madera. We also enjoyed the CSF luncheon. And I believe there was like 278 students that between our school district and CBC, COS has made it a priority to highlight, to host that event for many years because they want to continue to encourage scholarship and the best of our students. What I also enjoyed was hearing students talk about what their plans were, what school they are going to go to. Many of them mentioned COS, many of them mentioned schools all over the country that they are getting admission to. And that again is a highlight for our, our school district as a whole. Hurley Elementary, I hadn't been to in years and had a, just a very small contingency, just Mr. Fromm and myself to see what is happening there. And again, a school that they have a library that I'd like to go and read for the kids any day. It's out of who've been there, which it's carpeted and lit and it's like a small little theater. And the students are extremely engaged and wanting to be in that library as much as they can. Well, I walked through my first superintendent evaluation, which all of us just did. And there'll be more to report on that. But again, it was a labor, it was a labor of love to actually look through thoroughly what we expect and what we're looking forward to and our leadership here by So Unified. The Ivanhoe Open House I went to, it sounds like I've been to Ivanhoe a lot. I have. I had mentioned that I wanted to go and then it came up and I said, oh, it's on the calendar. I better go. I said, I was going to go there. And witness once again, Dr. G's, Dr. Gonzalez, his, his love and loved by students. He was mobbed by a group of kindergartners who call him Dr. Bob. And that happens readily, it sounds like. And what an amazing event, again, community. The Adult School Awards were another highlight last week with some 35 plus vendors and partners who were there to let students know what their options are for the future. And many of them are already engaging that. I saw some in the LBN program finding out that they could actually get some early admission to Grand Canyon University's nursing program. Of course, the musical this weekend, I am not, I have to say, I had not read The Lightning Thief. And my wife had to fill me in on all of the details, but was another outstanding production by Mr. Anders and the staff there at Golden West. The press release this morning was fun to be a part of. And then it goes, of course, the Education Foundation meeting yesterday, Dr. Odo and I were a part of. And then today I want to highlight, I brought my little bus and you probably wondered why this is on here. As we acknowledged bus driver appreciation week, and this is a unique device, it's, it's a squeezy thing for stress relief and hand development, but they were given to the drivers today. So that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Belt. Trustee Casebeers Salena.
Mine will be very brief. I just wanted to thank all of the public comment we had tonight. I think it's always really nice to, I mean, I shouldn't say nice because it was hard to hear some of the things that B U T A was telling us, but we do appreciate their input. We obviously don't know about things unless we're, they're brought to our attention. So I very much appreciated hearing from everyone. And so thank you for that. And then very briefly, I did receive several letters from students from Mount Whitney High School. I think it maybe was part of a project, I think. Did y'all get some of them too? I hope so. They were very well written. So whoever the teacher that helped them do that, thank you. And they're touching specifically on something that's near and dear to my heart, which is our school lunches and our nutrition with those. And I know that Superintendent Trum and I have had this discussion before. And I also know I received a couple emails a couple of weeks ago. I didn't have the opportunity to check tonight if these were some of the same students. But it is difficult for me to respond to students in the same vein. I don't know how to contact them. You know, I just receive a letter. It does have their home address. But if they're listening, we hear you. And I would really request that. Maybe I know that this has come up before Superintendent Trum, but perhaps we could in the next year or so, really get some people together and start looking very seriously at our school lunches and nutrition and seeing if we can meet some of these students and come up with some creative solutions.
Actually, if I could comment on that, we did get, I did get a few letters and I have contacted Ms. Ocampo and we're going to meet with some of these kids. So maybe we can, you and I can get together and organize that meet with the kids.
I would very much like to be a part of that.
Okay.
That concludes my report.
Board Member Nayler.
I'm gonna make mine short also, but I, it was heart wrenching. And near, and dear to my heart when I hear teachers. And so just want to say thank you for coming tonight or listening. I did want to say to the young lady, please don't quit. Please don't quit. Our kids are worth it. Our superintendent is really working hard. Our board is working hard to put things in place. So give us a little bit of time. We hear you. We really hear you. Education is so important. So please don't give up on them. And so on the positive note, I did see The Lightning Thief and my kids all read that book. So it was kind of nice to see it in musical. And they did an amazing job at Golden West. I did also visit Crestwood Elementary with Mr. D'Amelio and thank you for giving me the tour and walking with me. The principal, David Peterson, is doing an awesome job there. I also ran into Leslie Cantrell, who's at Tosa, and she's doing an awesome job there also. And welcome to our new board member. You did a great job tonight. Thank you.
I'm so relaxed. Yeah, I am. Board Member Vegas.
Thank you, President Gamoyen. Just as my fellow trustees have stated, I want to thank everyone who came tonight, participated, particularly those who came up to give public comment, share their stories and their narratives. I know it takes a lot to be able to stand up in front of a crowd, to stand up in front of your elected officials and inform them about what you believe in, what's going on. And so one express my appreciation for that. I was able to attend Crowley's Career Day and participate, listen to lots of students and their future ambitions and goals. And it was great to see students excited, teachers engaged, you know, I love that. I was in the cafeteria. But I mean, they had a fire truck outside. They had everybody. And up in the cafeteria, there were all these pendants of universities that their teachers had gone to. And so it was just really inspiring to see these students striving for their future. So shout out to Principal Yang and all of our staff at Crowley, who made it a great event. Was also able to visit our adult school celebration with Board Member Belt and our area administrator, Matt Shin, where we got to hear some very powerful stories and testimony of adult learners really striving through perseverance and passion to meet their goals. So Principal Wilson and her staff doing a great job out there. I did meet with one student, an adult student there and constituent who brought up, you know, what can we do to potentially bring some more resources to Goshen, in particular, and our adult learners in Goshen? I know I had a conversation with Superintendent Trum, so I look forward to seeing what we can do to, you know, possibly maybe have like a resource fair or a resource center there a couple of days a week. I know the ultimate goal and dream would be to, you know, establish some sort of resource center there in Goshen. But as we work towards that, where are some potential solutions we can find? And so looking forward to seeing what we can do for our community there. And finally, had the opportunity to visit Ivanhoe with Board Member Belt. We got to see some great learning in action. He is not lying when he says he was literally mobbed by TK learners. And their teachers are very quick to get them engaged again, but of course they had to give them a hug. So major shout out to Dr. Gonzalez and all our staff. I did not know that site has been open since 1889. And seen some of the modernization that has gone on there in the last decade. It's just amazing to know that students have those facilities. And that, you know, we are investing in their future and the resources to give them the tools they need. So, and I know that's happening at Crowley, that's happening across the district. So I look forward to continuing to work with our facilities team to make sure every student has what they deserve. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Dr. Odo.
I'd also like to join my fellow board members in thanking the Teachers Association and the teachers who presented tonight, provided us with their insight. It's important stuff. Engaged in a couple of things in the past two weeks, tech training on the diligent platform that we use tonight. So trained to a razor's edge in that now. Attended the Golden West Musical Lightning Thief, which was well done and also very fun to see something new. So that was great to see and kudos to Golden West for putting that on. I attended the Ed Foundation meeting earlier this week with Mr. Belt, met with the superintendent for a little quality time there. Attended the bus driver appreciation lunch today, and that's when I was superintendent, it was one of my favorite events because you've got a wide range of folks there who are doing a really good job working with kids. They're the first adults, staff members that some kids see every day and also the last. And the range there was astounding. They recognized a bus driver who had been there for seven weeks, seven weeks, who was excited about the work she was doing and also a driver who had been driving for 54 years. And that's he's been driving longer than most people in this room have been alive. So that was an astonishing thing and he's still very vital. And that is it. Thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Gaby.
So yes, definitely want to echo the thank you to the teachers and want to say thank you especially to a few of the teachers that are still here for all of the hard work they put into the 98% and they're awesome. So thank you for that. And also on The Lightning Thief, it's awesome that our elementary kids, I know some of our elementary schools take their students. My sixth graders were able to go see The Lightning Thief, which they have read. And what an awesome way to just connect to feeder schools and open up their eyes. One of mine came home suddenly thinking they're going to now want a drama elective. So pretty cool. And then a couple of site visits in the, in Superintendent Trum's report, he highlighted Riverway for their lunch or ELOP graffiti club. And while we were there, we got to see a couple of the murals they created. They are amazing. And so awesome on that. And Monica was here and I was also going to point out amazing learning intentions and success criteria, but I think she left. And then at Ridgeview, while we were on the visit, Mr. Yates, Principal Yates was going into the PE classes to really highlight as part of their dude be nice week, which is awesome. The behaviors that were expected and really just that the principal was going in there with the APs and all of that support to really make sure that it came from, you know, kind of his mouth and that consistent message to every PE class. And so just appreciate the extra steps that everybody is taking out there. And that's my report.
Thank you. I attended most, a lot of these events. I'm not going to bore you with the details. I do want to, first of all, thank the teachers that came. That was, that was heartbreaking to hear. And I want to echo Board Member Nayler, don't, don't quit. I, I really truly believe. I'm glad we, you know, we have to hear hard things. If I really truly believe it'll be a different report next year. And so I'm glad that they came and we had to hear some hard things. I also want to just give a couple thank yous. I want to thank the Visalia Police Department for their diligence on that work this weekend. And I want to thank the city of Visalia who worked diligently on the whole, and I think we could still be in danger of flooding, but just the whole, you know, do we close the schools? Do we keep them open? Yeah. And so that was good. And I'm glad we kept schools open because I don't ever want to close schools again. It was really quite, it was fun watching Congressman Costa. It was so cute because the kids go, you're really old. And so he's been in public service for over 40 years and I just really thanked him for that. And it was just fun to watch him interact with the, the kids. I actually went out to Golden West today and I took some pizza and I, and I wanted to talk to, you know, the staff wanted to talk to me. So I was able to do that. And one question, I mean, I, a lot of what they told me is what I heard here tonight. But one thing they asked me about, like, what's the next steps on the Alice training? And so that press conference we were at, we, did we get an award? Is that what it was? Or a recognition? Because how we trained the whole staff with Alice training. And I do want you to know there are next steps. Okay, their staff is looking at that. Going through that training, there were a lot of issues that came up that need to be addressed. And so students are going to be trained. And so there, there are next steps that are coming. So again, where would we be without teachers? Thank you. I want to create an environment in this district where everybody has the freedom to come and express their fears and their concerns. And so I'm really happy for these people that came tonight and talked. So thank you. Move on. Superintendent Shrum, I almost skipped you. Sorry.
Thank you, Board President Gamoyen and our board members. Also want to echo appreciation to our teachers for coming and talking about the experience. As we've also heard tonight, this has been a board that's committed to what are the resources, what are the policies, what are the systems, what are the programs we need to look at? And that investment has started way even before I got here, but really this past year. But just adding resources to schools doesn't necessarily equate to effectiveness. We know there has to be training, there has to be all of those things. And so while we do have additional resources at our sites, now we've got to work on the consistency, we've got to work on the processes involved with those things. But I would also want people to hear. You have to start with something. And I think that's where we, and the work that we have done this year, right? We can't fix a process to move students who are disruptive into an alternative placement without an alternative placement, right? So those are things that we're working on. But then how do we build our systems to make sure we're getting kids the right support? And also the consequence when it's necessary. And so there were several things we heard tonight that our district team will be following up on because we want to know what was the consequence in those situations? Do we need to reevaluate our consequences? Was it reported so that there could be a consequence? And all of that information will help us determine what are some of the next steps beyond those that we shared tonight. And so I think our teachers as well for coming and looking forward to continuing that conversation as we work together. Because while we did hear situations tonight, that is real, that it does exist on our campuses. We also know that's not the norm, that's not everywhere, and that's not all of our kids. And so we have safe learning environments, but we have work we have to do because that's not the experience for every student and for every teacher. And I compliment this board because our board declared in their beliefs and commitments that that's what they believe and they're committed to doing. And so then that gives us as a staff the ability to go out and do what we need to do to make that become the reality. And while I don't have a magic solution, I think if there was a magic solution out there, someone would have written a book and they'd be on the lecture circuit, right? And we wouldn't be talking about this. What I do know is the solution comes from people coming together, talking about these situations, talking about the facts. Let's get down to the real facts, right? Not, not other things. And then analyzing our systems. Did we have a breakdown? Is there not a system where we need one? We're only going to find the answers to those things when we engage in dialogue. And so I appreciate the opportunity to engage in that dialogue and that ongoing opportunity and also connecting with our kids. Many of the people we heard from tonight connect with our kids in great ways. And that's why they have learning environments that are safe. But we know we also have to build training and support of how do we do that all across the board as well. So yes, we have a lot of work to do. But I'm glad that we have teachers and others that are willing to engage in the work with us because we will not be effective if it's not everyone working together on those solutions. And so thank you for echoing your concerns and sharing those experiences with us tonight. I hope that every one of those individuals know that they were. I hope that every one of those individuals know that they were heard. So that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's move on to agenda item ten point one, recommended expulsions. Do I have a motion?
A motion. I'll second.
Motion by trustee K. Spears Saleno, second by trustee Gaby, all in favor.
Student board member abstains and vote passes unanimously.
Item ten point two, recommended reinstatements. Do I have a?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Dr. Vegas, second by trustee K. Spears Saleno.
Student board representative abstains and motion passes unanimously.
Recommended suspended expulsions. Do I have a motion?
A motion.
I'll second.
Motion by trustee K. Spears Saleno, second by Dr. Vegas. All in favor.
Student board member abstains and motion passes unanimously.
I turned myself off. Item eleven point one, California Employees Association, Chapter eighty-three. Initial proposal for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four classified negotiations. First read.
Good evening, Board President Gamoyen, Superintendent Schrum, members of the board and community. I am excited to introduce to you Crystal Lopez and Mr. Brad Thompson, I believe is here in Moral Support. And Ms. Lopez is our CSA president for our local chapter and she will be sharing with you tonight. The chapter's initial proposal for twenty-three, twenty-four classified negotiations. Again, this is a first read, so information only, no approval needed. Without further ado, Ms. Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. Dylan. Good evening, board members and Superintendent Trump. I am Crystal Lopez, your CSA board, I'm sorry, board president, along with Brad Thompson, our vice president for our chapter eighty-three. The following constitutes CSA's initial bargaining proposal. Article ten, health and welfare benefits, the district shall provide for the full increased cost of our current health and welfare benefits for all eligible employees and their dependents. Article thirteen, salary, CSA seeks a fair and equitable salary increase to our current twenty-two, twenty-three classified salary schedule. Article fifteen, leaves, CSA proposes to update, change, or amend language related to leaves and all other, other articles are status quo. Thank you.
Thank you. Item eleven point two, Visalia Unified School District Interest, Initial Proposal for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four Classified Negotiations, First Read.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much, Board President Gamoyen. So in accordance with Government Code Article eight, Section three, five, four, seven, we are here to share with you the district's interests in negotiating mutual agreeable contract with CSA as we go into this year. Specifically, the district is interested in ensuring all students achieve at high levels and demonstrate continuous growth. That we provide learning environments that are safe, supportive, and innovative, support employee success, equip them with the tools necessary for achievement and growth. To maintain the district reserves and preserve the instructional program for all students during economic cycles. And to engage in an open and honest exchange of information through collaborative and objective bargaining with California School Employees Association, Chapter eighty-three, which is our local chapter. The articles of the collective bargaining agreement related to salary and benefits, we open one of the articles determined by each party. And the district has an interest in opening Article nine, hours and overtime. Both parties also have a mutual interest for mutually, excuse me, mutually agreed upon articles for the purpose of including in the collective bargaining agreement, for example, incorporating the Juneteenth MOU into the article itself. So we look forward to good faith negotiations with CSA Chapter eighty-three. And continue to acknowledge both parties' commitment to provide an exemplary educational program to the students and community that we serve. I do want to say just a special thanks to Dr. Judy Burgess and her ongoing partnership and cooperation with CSA. And, and really excited about our current CSA leadership. It's been wonderful so far to work with them. They've been very cooperative, engaging, responsive, and obviously have their interests of their members and our students at heart.
Thank you. I, I forgot to ask if there was any board comment on eleven-two or eleven-three.
Make quick comment. First of all, we'll thank you, of course, to Dr. Burgess, but also thank you to Mr. Thompson and Mrs. Lopez, because I know as CSA representatives, you do this all on your own time. And I'm sure nobody ever calls you late at night or on the weekends or anything. So thank you for the work you do for CSA.
Yes, thank you for willing to step up for leadership.
Any other comments? Okay, item eleven-three, annual report on Measure A for the year ending June. Mr. Kerr.
Good evening again, President Gamoyen, Superintendent Schrum, and members of the board. We're happy to bring to you tonight the annual report for our bond measure A for the year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Bond Oversight Committee Chair Nick Messia isn't able to be here tonight, so Vice Chair, Mr. East Viera will present the report. Chuck?
All yours. Yeah, thanks. Am I supposed to move this thing? Are you going to do that?
I can do it.
Okay, great. That's perfect because I don't want to have to learn anything else tonight. Good evening, Superintendent Schrum and board members and everybody sitting here and back there and everywhere else. I know it's been a long night and I really think, you know, Nick, Nick was, had a conflict tonight and he texted me and he said, you know, I, I'm done with that, but, but now I'm just not feeling well and I'm going home. So I think he, the rumor hit that we were going long. I think that's exactly what happened. Anyways, I am the vice chair and I don't usually have to do this and he's a whole lot more interesting than I am. But basically our summary is that it was passed in twenty eighteen. You guys know all the backstory with over fifty-five percent vote and authorized up to a hundred and five point three million in bond spending. We have eight members, which meets the requirements of the California Constitution. And we did just add Carlin Lambert and she's got some good experience. And so it's, it's fun having her to have dialogue with when we're in these meetings. During the twenty twenty-two fiscal year, the committee reviewed projects with the bond expenditures as of June thirtieth totaling five point six oh six one nine nine point two nine dollars. It's a lot of money. And Crow LLC conducted performance and financial statement audits for fiscal year twenty twenty-two and had no recommendations as a result of these audits. And there you can see in the slide, all of the modernization projects that have been done. And that is primarily what our bond consists of at this time, since we did not move forward with the high school after the bids came in. I'm sure that there's going to be more dialogue about what will happen with that, but our job is simply to look at the report and tell you guys that we have reviewed it and that we are all in accord and we are. Look, the conclusion, the Bond Oversight Advisory Committee, based on its review of the annual financial performance audit reports, information received at its meetings and the response actions by the district is pleased to report that the district is in full compliance with the requirements of Article eight A, Section one B, three of the California Constitution. Boy, it's been a long time since I've had to do Roman numerals. I think I did it.
Good job.
Anything else? This concludes the report of the Bond Oversight Committee.
Okay, don't leave yet. Because we might have some questions.
Good, good for you.
Any board questions or comments?
I'll make a comment. You did a great job. And you know what? You're right there with Mr. Messias.
Why, thank you. Don't tell him. Don't tell him.
I agree with Board Member Nayler. And if you could just pass on all our thanks to all of the committee for the time and efforts you put into serving on this oversight committee.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Vera. Item eleven-four, local, local control accountability, la, 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 la plan. Mr. Demeo.
Thank you, Ms. Gamoyen, Superintendent Schrum, board members and community members. Ms. Vieira really set the bar for efficiency with presentation, so I will do my best to follow her lead. Tonight I just have some information I wanted to share with you. This is not an action item. Just a reminder for you about our LCAP process. In the next couple of months that we have coming up, there will be some actionable items that we'll want to talk to you about. So I just wanted to provide some reminders for you as to what the LCAP is and what the processes we go by creating it. So a, as, as we know, we have come with the, with the board's help. We've come up with our commitments and beliefs and the LCAP process really is what allows us to live out these particular core beliefs and commitments that we've established this year. The process that we use is going to determine what this is going to look like. So the LCAP process itself, we have to make sure that we have meaningful engagement with our educational partners. So some of the work we're doing is trying to make sure we are efficient with that. As we know, we work in a very diverse community, so we need to find different and better ways to make sure that we hear the voices from all of our constituents. Just as a reminder, the allocation for LCAP, meaning the monies that we get are based on a few criteria. We've heard the term unduplicated students. Remember that just means students are counted in one time for those different categories that we receive funding for. We also receive supplemental and concentration funds. And again, those monies need to be directed for particular groups. And when we use our metrics to determine the effectiveness of it, those are the metrics we want to make sure we're measuring to ensure that the goals we're working on actually meets these particular student groups. We have six different groups. Well, first of all, federal funding. So again, we receive state dollars and federal dollars. The requirements for each are a little bit different, but there are a lot of similarities. So when we talk about our LCAP process, it's one way we put all of our expenditures, all of our ideas, all of our plans together. So the nice thing about that is when you look at the plan, it's an all encompassing campaign for our district to move forward to. So you're not having to look at separate documents. It's also the documents our school site use when they create their single school plans as well. Remember that we had five goals. This year we've added a sixth. So this just talks about what each of those goals mean. And just as a reminder for you, we've listed what each of those goals are. Now, each one is a little bit specific. They each have metrics underneath them. I won't go into reading them. You guys have this report in front of you. But again, what I just wanted to point out was the type of goal each one is. So goal number one deals with academics. Goal number two deals with collaboration. Number three, culture and climate. Four, professional learning. Five is managing resources and six is a new one we added this year for special education. We have the opportunity to have a goal on special education because we know our special education students have not done as well as we'd like them to do. So now we have the opportunity to really focus on that and measure their progress as we move forward. So this, the slides are going to list some of the initiatives, some of the investments that you have chosen to make as we work towards supporting these goals, meaning how have we chosen to spend our money? The first one's dealing with academics. So you can see things like library support, newcomers academy interventions. Those are the different campaigns we're using because we feel that by doing those, by making those investments, our students will achieve at higher academic levels. When we're talking about the second goal, we know that again, if kids aren't in school, they're not going to be successful. So this is the area where we're able to spend some of those funds focusing on student achievement and increasing those areas. Goal number three again is that collaborative piece, that connection piece. So obviously these are those tools that we use to make sure that those students are well supported. Some of the comments you heard from our teaching staff tonight addressed to this particular issue, areas where kids are needing additional supports. And we know that many of the students that are the two percenters that the teachers described tonight are some of the students that we have in these categories. So these particular endeavors, expenditures that you all have approved for us to do are directly used to tackle those challenges that we have. Goal number four, again, this is that programs that we use, monies we're able to spend so that we're able to train up our staff so that they are well prepared to deal with the challenges of education and making sure that they do everything they need to do to clear their credentials appropriately. So our human resources department definitely benefits from this section because this is the area we make sure our staff are prepared to become excellent teachers. Goal number five talks about how do we manage the fiscal, fiscal assets on of our, our school sites? And then finally, the new goal that we're adding is how are we using our LCAP funds to support the success of students in our special education area? We know that's a population that is growing. So what are the things that we can do to really make sure those students are receiving the help they need? So when I come back to you in the next couple of months, we're going to have more specifics of what next year's LCAP is going to look like based on how well we've seen ourselves doing for this one. So this just kind of gives you a, a bit of a timeframe. So you can anticipate when you will be seeing some of those actionable items that we spoke about. And with that, I will entertain any questions you might have.
Questions? I have one question because you have to refresh my memory. We're going into our third year, right?
Jim, yes, yes.
Yeah.
And keep in mind, the LCAP is, is kind of a, a rolling process. So while we focus on the year that's coming, we still have a three-year process to talk about, right? So we can talk about, this is what we're doing this year, but this is the progress we want to see out those next couple.
Thank you, Mr. Demeo. Next, we have sorry. Turn the page, eleven point five, adoption of instructional material for high school, AP Bio, AP Calculus, AP Chemistry, AP Stats. Mr. Thompson.
All right. Good evening. We'll get there. I like that. Thank you. I appreciate that. So good evening, Board, Board President Gamoyen, Superintendent Schrum. So what we're bringing today is a first read, so there's no action to be taken tonight. But basically, I'm just going to run you through the process. We, we are revamping some of our AP classes, the curriculum as they are grown out of date. And so our goal here is to go ahead and make sure we have updated curriculum and go into that. So I'm going to run you through the process, but tonight we're looking at advanced placement for biology, calculus, chemistry, and statistics. This is a textbook adoption. So again, providing quality resources for our students so that they can get a quality education is obviously our goal and focus here. Timelines, this is pretty consistent for all of them, but each of them have a timeline of starting doing a screening, getting a request for all the different adoptions that are out there, getting that request, teachers viewing them. Obviously, if it's an AP Calc textbook, then AP Calculus teachers looking at that, AP Chem kind of working through each of those. And following a timeline where paper screening it and then we're piloting it with students so that they have opportunity to provide us some feedback as well in order to make a wise decision on what textbooks that we are going to adopt. So for calculus, we had Pearson and Bedford looking at those. Again, we did our teacher review happens first. Looking at that, they give a one for meats, zero as inadequate. They look at Bedford, third edition was the one that was clearly the winner there. That was then piloted with our students, our students then rated on a different scale, looking at relevance, the online platform. Also helpfulness for the AP test, which is so important, examples to support learning. Again, that was at a three point eight eight out of five. So our recommendation is that we do go forward with our Bedford as both our teachers and our students give it a high ranking, higher ranking than others. Our next one is AP Stats, looking again at Pearson and Bedford. Again, similar process, teachers rated this one at a point nine seven, again, out of a one and as their own is not meeting. Students rated it actually very high in those same four categories at a four point nine out of five. So our request here are a recommendation again here is to go with the practice, the practice of statistics moving forward. Again, this is a first read. Again, now we're in AP Biology, AP Biology, we're looking at Pearson and Bedford. Again, teachers rated it first. They came in, looked at that, AP teachers, they get a one, so a good perfect score on Bedford. Again, the students looked at it, they gave a four point one one out of five. Again, so that's our recommendation for AP Biology. And then AP Chemistry, again, looking at two companies here with Pearson and Cintage. Looking at that, when we look at that, the Pearson was a point nine five. The other company was a point six seven. So again, we piloted that with our students and got a rating there of a three point seven nine out of five as well. Students had confidence in it with what they saw as helpfulness as well through that. So our recommendation there is just to go with the Pearson Chemistry. And that concludes my report. I will stay here for any questions.
Any questions or comments?
Comment is just think, you know, I love that we're including students in the review. That's awesome. Silly question, but what does science content mean in math? Like up in your data teacher review? Like the science of learning or like see where it says AP Statistics Data and AP Calculus Data Program Organization, I can get science data acquisition, access and equity alignment with AP. You have to answer now.
Mr. Building thing, I guarantee you will be able to answer or Mrs. Phillips, you'll be able to do that.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so the science of learning. Thank you. As that is a little confusing, yes, science and math are so integrated with each other, but that makes sense.
Okay. We have adoption, yeah, 11.6 Adoption Instruction Material Phonics for K2. First read.
Very good. Again, this is a first read. You're stuck with me just a touch longer. But what we're focusing on right here is K2 Phonics Adoption. Again, this is our first read for tonight. Again, same goal and commitment, right, to provide quality education for all students. This is actually, I wanted to start off, this is an area that we saw as a gap. And this year, we wanted to really target in on this gap for our students as we believe there's an important piece of phonics that it is embedded in our current curriculum, but it's not as robust as we believe it should be and could be for our students. So obviously, we know there's a ton of research and data that shows that when a student is reading at grade level by the age of by third grade, their results are so much far better to graduate in high school and to be successful moving forward. And when students are not at grade level by that age, it really puts them way behind. As we know, you learn to learn to read the younger ages and you read to learn, right, later on. And so that's so important to have that foundation. So again, timeline is pretty consistent here. We've seen over and over again here, but going through that process. In this one, the team took a very robust approach to this and really put an RFP out, which is basically a request for all curriculum to be brought to them and so so they can look at it and really make some good recommendations here. Which reviewing, reviewing Wilson Language was the foundations is the one that we were looking at. You can kind of see the different kits there. Obviously, it's very visual and obviously using a lot of sounds and actions there as you're connecting those. Foundations data. So again, pilot teachers here, if you look at this scale, it's a little bit different scale. It looks like it's a skeleton, looking at relevance. So these were pilot teachers. These were teachers we brought in from the very beginning to look at the data or to look at the different programs. So they rated as a 9.24, but then they went out to all K2 teachers to get their feedback on it. And at that, they also gave it almost an eight out of 10 there. And they just, you know, some of the feedback was it was engaging that the videos for the PD were helpful and that there was clear processes that they could utilize that would help them to be able to do this on a daily basis, regular basis. As we know, it is so important for the phonics building is to do it consistently, regularly, so students get that reputation and get that knowledge. Feedback from students. We had 114 students respond in ours as they're littler, so it's a little harder to get that, but but you know, I'll say one here. It says, my favorite program is Foundation because it helped me with my handwriting. It's pretty profound for for second grader. You know, and so you can kind of see that they have different things of why they enjoyed the program and what they saw was beneficial. So also, kids were available at the VLC from March 27 to April 17. So we received feedback from one community member. Again, we talked about this is how can we provide other ways for them to see that and be to make it available as we continue to move forward in this. We are kind of looking at our system on that. But we do have it out and available for the community to see that usually for one month. That's out there before we bring it to the board. So what we're looking for is a five-year adoption that all teachers would get teaching kits, student kits, 30 per classroom. And obviously, what's nice about this too is we know it's not just about buying a program, but it's also about making sure that we have the professional development behind it, so that way our teachers have the knowledge and experience to use it and to and to build that. So we built that in with the company to work with us with our team on how we professional development and prepare our teachers for this. So that's that. I'll take any questions.
Any board comment or questions? Superintendent Schrum?
Yes, just want to make a quick comment. You know, this is something that's been very important and on top of mind. Making sure that we go into this next school year explicitly teaching phonics. For at least, I think it's about 30 minutes per instructional day. You know, in our K through two classrooms, I want to thank the teachers, Claudia and the team for working together to bring this proposal for us. This is so important to foundational literacy that the whole executive cabinet team will be participating in the training, and we will also be delivering a phonics lesson this fall. And so this is really important, and we want our teachers and others to see how important this is. This will change outcomes for our kids, and the more kids we have reading on grade levels, we know by third grade the better their outcomes. And so I want to thank Mark and his team and our teachers as well, and I look forward to visiting a classroom this fall and teaching my phonics lessons. So I'll turn it back over to President Gomoyan.
Thank you.
I'll say something real quick too. I just want to say there was a big write-up in the New York Times not that long ago about phonics and the importance and how this is kind of a raging thing going on in the country raging, but I mean debate. But I was really happy when I read that article. I was like, oh, we're doing that already. So great job.
Yes, I echo that. 11.7 Notice of Intent to Employ Certified I know, I am so tired right now. Personnel and Approval of Provisional Intern Permit Request. Mr. Dillon.
I got you covered here, Board Member Gomoyan. This will not take long, but it is important. So I do want to share with you Board President, Superintendent Schrum, members of the board, the request for the board to approve the provisional internship permit requested. This is for an education specialist who we were able to bring onboard, and this individual specifically just needs additional time to become intern eligible.
I will make a motion to accept.
I'll second.
Okay, motion on Dr. Vegas, second, or remember, K. Spears Saleno, all in favor.
Student Board Representative votes yes and motion passes unanimously.
11.8 Warrant List. Do I have a motion? Oh, sorry, Mr. Sorry, Mr. Hernandez. I'm just like.
This is our routine action, President Gomoyan, to approve the warrant list from February 25 to March 31. You can go.
I'll motion to approve.
And second.
Okay, motion by Board Member K. Spears Saleno. Second by Dr. Odo, all in favor. Oh, my gosh.
Student Board Representative votes yes and motion passes 6-0 with one abstention.
On that note, and thank you, fellow board members for helping me, we're adjourned.